Call the regular city council meeting to order this April 3rd, 2018, 7 o'clock. Additions to the agenda? Consider Resolution 2018-04 under Grocery Store. Any other additions to the agenda?
Uh, executive session.
Also, the executive session for the police department, 10 minutes to discuss individuals, employees' performance pursuant to nondelegated personnel matter exception.
Should I just take my packet?
Do you hear a motion?
Still moved.
Second. Motion and a second on the table. Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Carrie's 3, 1, Jim upset. Alright, citizens' comments. Does anyone have any comments this evening?
Um, are you going, I came up over the property at 104 Southwest Street. Are we going to discuss that?
Are you the owner of the property? Okay.
Yes.
What was decided before, I believe we moved to go ahead with demolishing it if everything checked out. Um, I don't know where we were on that, guys, as far as paperwork and everything.
I think Jamie could tie it up, but I haven't looked at it.
Um, everything's there, um, but do I need to talk about like the extension?
Oh, that's right.
So, um, in the process of all of this, um, trying to figure out what needed done and all of that, Jeff, I believe, did you say you gave them 90 days?
I gave them verbal, but I didn't realize at that time it was under resolution. So I spoke out of school. I did not know that at the time. I extended it 90 days.
Unable to be done, Jeff, you know, was letting us know that we would work with them as long as there was progress. So, um, BJ came in and we talked a couple times last week. Um, I, she had talked that, did you guys do some work on it Saturday?
Oh, yeah.
I saw, I saw some people there.
We did lots of work on it.
So I, I told her, you know, that, I told her of what happened at council meeting, um, and that, you know, it was her, her choice to decide to work on it and come to you and show you guys what she's doing, um.
Did you go take the pictures?
No, I told you to call me and let me know if you wanted me to.
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
It's okay.
I didn't call, but yes.
There was work done.
We did a lot of work over the Easter holiday, a lot.
So, I did take some outside pictures and there has been some progress.
Prior to the meeting on March 20th, just to summarize, it's my understanding from hearing from our bill, Jeff had had a phone call with, I guess, the owners and during that phone call, it was relayed that council would give, Jeff not knowing even his authority to give 90 days. And so this, the owners, it's my understanding, have been operating under this belief that they had 90 days. Then we came in as council on the 20th and you guys moved forward, I guess, without that knowledge.
Yeah.
And that was just being brought, that's, I think, what Jamie's trying to intend to bring to the council right now.
At the time that I spoke with her, the weather was pretty nasty and she said if the weather straightened up, they would get to work on it and it hadn't been, the weather hadn't been fit to work on it. And, and like I said, at that time, I did not realize that that was made by resolution. So I did not have the right to give that notice. And I tried to call her back after that about three different times and never did get a hold of her to explain to her that I had spoke out of turn and I could not allow that without the council's approval. And I never did get a hold of her. So, that's kinda where we left it.
Thoughts?
What are your guys' intentions with the building?
Well, I would like to make a daycare out of the house. And then after the daycare closed for the day, and I already checked this out with the health department, I could sleep in there at night. And that way, there's been a lot of vandalism on that property because of where it's at. And I want the property secure. But I also want the daycare because there is a dire need in this town for decent daycare. There isn't very many of them. And that way, my employees would have daycare on site if their children needed them. The corner store, I want to turn it back into a little grocery store like there was when I was growing up here. And support the local farmers and the local, you know, I, I think we have a desperate need. Now, when you get a full-size grocery store out, which I know you're doing, that really won't affect me because, um, I'm also gonna sell deli sandwiches in there 'cause I'll sell deli hamburger and deli sausage. I have a son that works in a meatpacking plant and has for years. And when he, uh, wants to retire, he wants to come back here and retire here. He grew up here. This is his home, his community, just like with me. And as I progress, because I want this for my grandchildren and I want it for the community. My parents love this community. This is where we set our roots. This is home. And it's dying. And I don't like that. When I was in high school, we got state championship in football and basketball every year. We had 200 students in the high school. Now we have approximately 200 students in the school. Also, when I get the store and the daycare going good, I want a small mom and pop restaurant in memorial to my mother, my father, and the community. I was a, a first responder for many, many years in Wichita, Topeka. I was an RF. And yes, I've had problems, but I also have reasons for that. And my life is an open book. If anybody wants me to answer any questions, I have no problem with that.
Counsel's thoughts?
But all I want is good things for that property, the community, and my family.
If council wants my thoughts, we can go into executive session and I can give my legal thoughts.
When do you want to do that, John?
Well, doesn't matter to me.
Jamie, we can jump up and go out.
We can just amend the agenda, executive session.
I'd make a motion to amend the agenda for, uh, how long?
Five minutes.
Five-minute executive session, attorney-client.
Related to this issue.
Related to this issue.
To include?
Oh, I don't think I need anybody but council. Just maybe if that's...
Just take notes in executive session?
Okay. Just council, mayor.
To include council, mayor.
Okay. Motion and a second on the table?
You guys can just sit there if you will. We'll, we'll step out.
Any other discussion that wait to conclude at 7:16?
Oh, also, we're getting ready to plant. And I want to be open by the time my garden is ready to harvest.
Talk to more in a minute. All in favor? All opposed?
I'm, I'm in favor.
Hey, in favor. Jim's in favor. Uh, Ryan, second. Call council meeting back to order. So as far as this property goes, I guess I would say that, you know, even though property authority wasn't there, we should still, um, try to honor that as much as possible, stand behind our people, but with some expectations. So what's the council think as far as this property goes?
I would like to review it in 30 days and see that there's, I mean, the building needs a roof on it bad.
Yes.
And I would like to see progress of that within the next 30 days.
Yes.
And we'll continue to review it every 30 days as long as progress is being made as far as I'm concerned.
I'm at the point right now, I'm getting ready to call contractors about the foundation because I need the foundation structured right. Because I'll be in a bind with the doors and the roofs if the foundation isn't set. And I'm going to get bids from con, uh, for roofers too. And I'm in progress of selling my property in New Mexico to cover these costs. And then after we get those done, I wanna put in new ceilings, new floors.
As long as there's, um, progress made within that 30 days, as Councilman Sanderson said, we will go ahead and review it again after that 30 days. But as long as you keep on making improvements on it, we're okay with that.
I really appreciate you working with me.
But you do need to make sure, though, that you understand that we would like to see some progress on that roof, you know, so.
Yes, yes.
Alright.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
I don't want it falling down on the seat of...
Understood.
Okay.
So...
Do you, we need to make a motion on that, John, or anything, or?
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
May 8th, is that what we're doing?
What would be our, what's our first meeting?
We have a 17th meeting and then 1st of May, but that would only be 28 days. So the following...
The 3rd of May would be 30 days, so the 15th of May would be?
15th of May would be a little...
We'll review the 15th.
Yeah, we'll review it. 15th, I'll be fine with that.
The weather's getting better. It's getting better for the outside world. And we're working and planning right now too.
Thank you very much for coming, talking to us about it.
Thank you.
I appreciate you working with me.
Are there any other citizens' comments?
Um, is it okay if I stand?
You said.
Um, I'm Jeffrey Lyon, president of the St. John Comic Book Club, and this is Ethan Houston, the secretary of the St. John Comic Book Club. And we are here to ask if the city council or the St. John City would care to help sponsor an event, May the 4th, for Star Wars Day, which would be a Friday. We are wondering if you would be kind to sponsor a movie in the square here, as was done the community day. It would root, um, we're asking for sponsorship in the inflatable screen, the projector, and the sound system.
You've not covered it all, Jeff.
What, what does it?
We got a projector and sound system.
Correct. Um, the inflatable screen, I kind of spoke with Mark a little bit on this topic earlier today, um, as most everyone knows, the wind played a big factor in our community day. Um, so I kind of discussed with him maybe some other options and just because of the wind, I mean, eventually the Jubilee Committee wants to have our own movie screen so we can do more of those things. So, I mean, I would say yes, given either option, because, I mean, we want to, we want to be able to do more of that in the future, but the inflatable screen just really wasn't...
How big was that?
I mean, it was, it was great, how big. It was pretty big, I don't remember the dimensions, it was pretty big.
Pretty dark when you do that thing.
Yeah. And I, I mean, it was really cool, but the, I mean, the wind, you get those gusts and it, it stands up to, what, 25 mile an hour?
Yeah, that's when you get the gust and it starts to fall over.
Yep.
So, I mean, going forward, we're gonna want to have something a little bit more permanent and not have to rent, but...
What's the cost to rent that?
It was a couple hundred dollars.
What can we buy one for?
Well, with, with our awesome ideas with the gazebo and all of that, really, um, if we get in the guys together, I, I think we can just buy the, whatever it's, I mean, just that, but then we would connect, we would be able to connect it. I mean, I think we'll be able to, I mean, we'll be able to buy one for under that amount if we pull our heads together and make it, but it's just finding the time.
How much is a gazebo gonna cost, Jeff?
We haven't got that far.
10, 15,000 dollars?
Twenty brother.
Yeah, that's for the future.
Right.
Have to have permission to do it first, but first we have to own the property and we don't even have the paper on the property yet, so.
Right, right. Um, you know, I, as far as handling things like this in council, my, my opinion is, is this is something that can be handled outside of with the city clerk unless it comes to money. So, I mean, this is kind of a, I think, a mashup kind of partnership with the city as far as spending money and using equipment and, and things like that. So, I guess it would be appropriate for it to be here. But, uh, you know, if, if someone was wanting to host an event in the square and whatever, if one of the hundred dollars, you know, that'd be something, but, uh, I don't know. What do you guys think?
See, probably wouldn't be in the square doing that to, so basically what you're saying is it would cost us a hundred dollars to rent the inflatable screen.
I don't have to look at the, I would have to pull up the receipt for sure if, if we did go with the inflatable route.
Okay.
But this might be a good op, which May 4th is gonna come out pretty quickly, but...
Here's a thought, I don't know whether it would work or not, you know, we have that backdrop that we use for Jubilee.
We could put what we want on it.
If we painted it white, except for Jubilee weekend, I mean, it gets painted for that, but I mean, that might be an alternative that could be set up and we'd be fairly solid.
Well, we did that a couple of years ago. We, we just threw like a sheath over it, uh, when they did like the Wizard of Oz at nighttime, and that worked out fairly well.
Yeah, it would be more stable than what that other one would be, so.
So just set up the, the stage early for the backdrop part of the stage.
How big is that one?
Not big enough.
Well, we're just offering to them if wind is an issue and an inflatable isn't practical. There's a flat side to the incubator building right here that has an empty lot to the, to the north.
It's just iron.
And I'd be glad to facilitate that if that's a practical alternative. It's not on the city square, but close. We don't have any of the sound equipment or anything, just get aside of the...
I don't have a problem with the sound equipment, the projectors, I mean, as long as somebody's setting it up and taking care of it, making sure it's...
I just have to be available.
Yeah, I don't see a problem with it. Even at the rental of the inflatable, if that's the route that you go with that, I mean, that's, that's fine with me, I mean. I'm okay with donating rental of it to... To get somebody down to the square, you know, a reasonable amount there.
Yeah. Okay.
You need a motion to spend the money, or that's within your authority to spend.
Sure is.
Great. We're glad to help you guys out.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for coming, guys.
Thank you, guys. Are there any other citizens' comments?
Yeah, I have one.
All, you don't count.
I know. Um, previously, um, on my last bill, there was a discrepancy of 57,000, 14,000 gallons that were used at my property. You start to look through some of the information that I was given through the office, um, around, let's see, January 18th, it started to go up to 57.5, um, on the register on that. Um, this went all the way through January until it was caught in February, and then once it was caught, um, I had my water turned off. Once the water was turned back on, um, the utility worker that came down that spoke with me turned the water back on and, um, there was no leak, 'cause there was, he immediately said, "You don't have a leak." The next day, on Saturday, I went and I checked everything and there is no leak. So regardless of what this says right here, that this meter passed, I'm very skeptical on that because I haven't had any problem since. And if you want to take a look at any of this right here after the fact, everything has been consistent. Um, I don't understand what happened on that, but I don't feel that I need to pay this fifty dollars or the sixty-eight dollars, um, and some change on my bill. I don't feel that this is a, I don't see that, I did, this, this meter had, that meter had a problem on it, but I'm going to leave it up to council on what they decide, so.
Jeff, can you update us on, on that situation?
I, um, I took that meter after we got the call on that. I sent it to an independent third party. I did not send it back to the company we bought it from. I had the meter tested, it tested 99.86.
What's that?
Which is as close to 100% accurate as it can be.
Midwest meter.
Yes. So, um, you know, I've, I've had this on different occasions, not necessarily on water, I've had some electricity. I don't, I don't know what caused that meter to turn, but those meters work on demand. And so I can't justify where it went, but I can tell you that when I sent it in and had it tested, it tested 100%, fast, slow, and intermediate, so.
So what you're, that's what you're saying, Mark, is it's from the middle of January, you had a high, high water usage and it's gone to be normal, just like it has been the years past?
I was told 14,000 gallons of water had been used and that's, I, I live alone and that's impossible. Even if I let the water run all day, there's no way I could get that much.
Yeah. That's average at my house, I think. Thoughts, counsel?
Is there a possibility the meter could still have?
I, I'm not gonna say one way or the other. I've, I've been doing this for over 30 years and I've never seen one turn that didn't have a reason to. I'm not gonna say this is not the first time. I'm just gonna say I've never seen one turn if it didn't have demand. And this meter will turn on an eight-ounce glass of water, so that's how accurate it And that's the reason I sent it to an independent place to have it tested, so that it wasn't falsified by the company that built it, so.
What's counsel like?
How much is it total, Mark? Do you know? What was it?
Do you know what it was?
The total bill?
Or just, no, just the overage? Was it 68 something? Or maybe it's...
I mean, if Paul else fails, at least not charged for the, the meter testing and all, which way you guys are leaning, but...
Whatever you want to do.
You know.
Jeff, do you still have that meter that they sent back?
I do, yes. It's over in the shop.
And the one thing I just can't figure out, I mean, if, if there was a leak in a pipe or something, surely would see, if it was out in the yard, I would see it like last time.
I asked him if his numbers had been helping himself while he was gone, you know? He said no.
I know when a toilet sticks on, it runs a lot of water, you know, but, you know, I can't say that, you know...
The funny thing is, on this meter, if we look, I noticed something that at, between midnight and 1 o'clock, about point six, something always occurs, and I don't understand that, why that happens. I mean, not unless my cat is flushing the toilet, so I have no idea. How much is it?
61.38.
61.38, okay.
I believe.
Is the, I mean, that's the overage, more than 5,000 gallons, apparently. That was just a difference of what a typical water bill usually run?
That would have been, I believe that was everything over the normal 3,000.
Or 3,000, yeah, okay.
I think that's how we did it.
And what's the bill from the, wherever the meter?
Fifty, was it 50 dollars?
Oh, the test.
The test?
That's how much the city charges for, if anyone wants to say, "Hey, my meter's not working," it's, the city charges 50 dollars for that testing.
50 dollars?
I believe it's for the testing and the time that the guys put in.
Okay.
Y'all voted to let the school off.
That was for a late charge, Jim. I mean, as far as the trend goes, you know, this is kind of high to me, where, you know, when you have a steady, steady usage and it's not like you're out watering the garden in the middle of January, so the meter test, I mean, I, just because it was working correctly at that moment, doesn't mean it couldn't have been, you know, I don't know. What's counsel want?
I move the table.
Go ahead, Jamie.
The, you know, from my understanding, we got the meter.
Oh, yes, I do, sorry. I'll, I'll get to you in a second. Motion on the table to table it? Is there a second?
I want to hear what she has to say first.
Dies for a lack of motion, or second? Any other discussions?
It's my understanding we got these meters because they're more accurate and we would be able to work through these pro, problems a little bit better. And it's my understanding that going forward, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we weren't gonna be doing this.
Yeah. You're right. The only thing that I see wrong with forgiving it, Mark, and nothing against you, but I almost feel like it's gonna be a never-ending deal if...
And, and that was one of, and that was one of my reasons why I was really hesitant about bringing this, so, you know, and I'm not, in whatever way the council votes, I'm not taking it personally, so, you know, don't worry about that. I just want, I just would like to see, I just don't think I need to pay it, but if you decide, I will.
I would at least entertain a motion to forgive the 50 dollars to have the meter tested.
What size of meter is that, Jeff?
5/8 circle. 25 gallon minute meter. I just would say that the reason we picked these meters is for the accuracy of them, 'cause they have basically the highest standard on the market for accuracy, and that's, that's the whole reason that we picked them to start with, you know? Um, and where it goes after it goes through the meter, I can't say. I mean, like Ryan said, it could be a stool, it leaks, shuts itself off, uh, it's been known to happen. I, I can't say once it goes through the meter. All I know is that the test shows that it's 100% accurate, so.
I guess my only hangup is, is I know we've had some issues with meters leaking and some other things. I mean, because mine was leaking, but you guys changed out at my shop.
It was froze on the bottom, yeah.
But, and I know we've had some that aren't actually showing a display on them and stuff like that. So I'm, I'm just wondering if we don't have a few of the meters out of the 600 or whatever that were faulty?
Oh, there's always a few. I mean, you know, there's 700, basically 730 meters on the system, and, uh, we've had less than a handful, you know, but there are a few, I mean, and, and we did, we had a couple that froze and broke. When it did, it shut the register down on them. They read no more. As far as turning when they shouldn't, uh, we haven't had any, you know, so. I mean, we're always gonna have... I mean, we're always going to have a few that either don't read or don't call back. You know, I do, I changed, I changed three modules today. I mean, it's not unusual. But, you know, it's a pretty low, it's a pretty low failure rate for the amount of meters that are there, so.
If they err, it's on not reading rather than reading over.
Yes, most generally always, yes. And that's when it gives Jennifer a signal on her screen that there's something wrong with it, so.
I don't know, Mark, I, I think we had a lady in here a while back, you know, we didn't forgive that. I think that's kind of the road that we need to head towards. That's just my thoughts on that.
On everything, the fifty-two?
I don't want to go there at all.
On the check in the meter, testing the meter?
I just don't, because we're going to be there everywhere.
I mean, the thing is, is if the meter was bad, we're going to eat the fifty dollars. And we're going to eat sixty-one thirty-three, or thirty-eight, or whatever it is, if the meter was bad. So are you saying for everything?
Yeah, I'm, I'm saying we...
Making pay for the meter and the testing and...
Yeah, because I just, we're going to go down this road, you know, with other people, you know? I, I mean, it's going to come up multiple times and we just, I think we just need to stick one thing and that's just the way it's going to be. If the meter test fine, then we aren't going to forgive the water usage or the meter testing, so.
I'm fine with that, because I think it will be a problem in the long run.
Okay, if that's, council wants to do, I'm fine with that, so.
Well, I hope we keep the same standard for everybody and everything. We'll all see policy and take care of business.
And like I said before, I understand, and I was really hesitant about bringing this to council to begin with, because it would set something up at a place I didn't want to go.
Everybody has the right to their thoughts, so, thank you.
Right, so, there we go. All right, that's fine, thank you, all right.
Are there any other citizens' comments this evening? Already moving on, consent agenda approved minutes of the regular council meeting, March twentieth, two thousand eighteen. Also appropriation ordinance zero four zero three eighteen and the amount of sixty-two thousand nine hundred ninety-six dollars and nine cents. Also petty cash, three hundred and fourteen dollars and eighty-nine cents. A motion and a second on the table, any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed, carries four oh. All right, moving on, grocery store, IRB.
Carolyn? You want me here? The construction costs for the grocery store include sales tax of materials used in the construction of the store and equipment. On this project, it's going to add up to about two hundred thousand dollars, which is, you know, a significant piece of fundraising. We would be in a much, much more comfortable position to not have to incur that cost. And we had looked into a couple of alternatives, one of which was to ask for an exemption from the Kansas Legislature. There's probably a lot, over the course of history, there's a lot of other nonprofits that have been exempted from Kansas sales tax, either for a project or on an ongoing basis as an organization. And we did, we did approach the Kansas Legislature with that request this year, but it's not been a good year for that type of request and it was not passed out of committee. So an alternative to achieve the same outcome is to issue an industrial revenue bond, which I, I think it would be best if bond council gives you the detailed explanation of that. But in this case, it's a, it is a tool we're using for one of the three benefits that the state of Kansas gives with industrial revenue bonds. You can, you know, one of the three benefits is that the sales tax on the construction costs is exempted. We're not doing that in this case for the, for the purpose of raising funds to finance the store. We still plan on using S J N Bank for the loan on this. They've extended very favorable terms and we want to keep business local and that's just a good alternative. But the benefit here of two hundred thousand dollars worth of reduced cost was worth maybe considering doing it. I guess jumping through some hoops, that's what it boils down to. And I think it's done commonly in the state. We just don't necessarily have a lot of experience with that here in St. John, either with our bankers or in economic development or necessarily the city council. But that's, that's what, I guess, bond council's for. So, I don't know, can I turn it over to you and give an explanation of how that can be done?
Thank you, Carolyn.
My name's Dominic, I come with Gilmore and Bell, Radwick, Utah, and we are a bond council. That's, that's all we do for our practice area, is serve municipalities, cities, school districts, counties, for their finance needs, whether that be through economic development activities like we are, have before the council denied, or just their general obligation bonds and general city projects. So we are here tonight for the grocery store project to talk about IRBs. And as was mentioned, one of the benefits of IRBs is a sales tax exemption on the construction and equipment materials that go into the project. So not to be confused with, you know, sales from the completed project being exempt from, from sales tax. That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about when you purchase materials to build the project, you purchase your equipment to go into the project, those being exempt from having to pay the seven hundred percent sales tax, six hundred percent sales tax. The city or county, a city or county is required by statute to be the issuer of industrial revenue bonds, which is why we are here tonight. The, the, this, the first step in the process would be to adopt this resolution of intent. It would declare the city's intent to issue revenue, revenue bonds, industrial revenue bonds for this project. It would start a reimbursement clock, if you will, that anything spent at this time or up to sixty days before would be eligible to be, as eligible costs under the industrial revenue bonds and thus exempt from sales tax. Because this is a retail project and because there's some TIF and other components, a adware property tax exemption is not available for retail. By statute, this is the benefit that is around the IRBs, is just this sales tax exemption. So these bonds, if issued by the city, would not be liabilities of the city in any way. The city would be what is referred to as a conduit issuer. The city would be the issuer of the bonds. Their only obligation on the bonds would be to take lease revenues they receive from leasing this project to a third party and passing those on to the purchaser or holder of the bonds. So typically, in this scenario, what would occur is the development entity would build the facility, will come back, they will lease that facility to the city. The city will lease it to the purchaser of the bonds, which typically, and what we expect in this case, would be also that same development entity. So the city's obligation would be take rental payments from the economic development entity, send rental payments to the economic development entity. They paying themselves and the cash, the cash doesn't even have to necessarily flow through. So in no way would the city be on the hook for any payments. If they, if for some reason there was a third-party purchaser and the economic development entity stopped making payments, the city would not be then obligated to come make payments. But we don't expect that in this case. We expect it to be what's referred to as the buy-your-own bonds. So they will be both obligated to pay and entitled to receive the benefits of these bonds. After the resolution of intent is adopted, the economic development entity can apply for a sales tax exemption certificate. And that's what they will actually use to give contractors and other providers to show, okay, we don't have to pay sales tax on this that we're buying from you. So we, our firm is, is happy to help obtain that certificate. We'll need one number from the city, which we'll work with, with Jamie to get. And then after the project is fully complete, we'll come back. There will be an ordinance which will authorize the actual issuance of the bonds. We'll have a lot more paperwork that next time, but, but again, it won't obligate the city. And those bonds will be outstanding for six months or a year. And then they will close down, pay off, and the transaction will be concluded.
So it only has to be like a six-month lease? It doesn't have to be any, okay, that's something I was aware of.
We'll leave it outstanding and we'll, we'll call it in early, typically speaking. And as mentioned, this is not a funding source for the, for the project. There will be no outside sources of fund that we expect coming in here. The purpose of this is, is, like you said, to obtain the, the sales tax exemption. So I am happy to entertain any questions that council may have or try to explain anything further that you'd like to hear.
Basically, we're just the loophole, basically, is all, right? I mean...
You're the conduit, which the sales tax exemption certificate can be obtained, yes.
John?
And Dominic, your firm, Gilmore and Bell, actually then represents the issuer, the city?
Correct, the city would be, the city is always our, our client. The issuers are our clients.
And you, you then get paid through the issuance of the bonds, correct?
We get paid with the issuance of the bonds.
So there's not even that kind of cost for the...
Not to the city. We always have that flow back to the requesting entity, the tenant is what we call it, which in this case would be the economic development entity. This is the economic development entity. Commonly, they will pay the, the cost for our fees and not the issuer itself. So like, going back to what you said, you're really a conduit of how can, they, they found a way to reduce costs for their project. They can't do it by themselves. They need the help of a, of a governmental entity.
What dollar matter you float in those IRBs?
It is, they asked for a number, it's a number that fully covers the entire project. It's not even a number that represents the amount of taxable costs. So the contractor's estimating that the, the materials and equipment costs that are going to be subject to sales tax in this is going to be about two point two-five million. Thus roughly a two hundred thousand dollars worth of sales tax savings by doing this.
Yeah, we like to authorize up to the full amount of expected project cost in case things change. And so we have in here a three point eight million not to exceed amount. And based on what the final project cost come in at and some of that analysis, we'll come up with a, with a final number when we present the ordinance after project completion.
What other thoughts do you have on this, John?
Candidly, we have always used Gilmore and Bell in the past. And we used to represent Pratt County when they redid their hospital. You know, it's just, that's all they do. And as far as I know, I think you guys are the only ones that, that do any of this kind of work, are you, aren't you?
We're, we're a major player.
As far, as far as, as far as I know. But I have reviewed the resolution. I, I don't have any problems with the resolution. I can't say I can wrap my head around the entire process, but...
I got a really good idea how it all works. I mean, to me, it seems like it's basically taking money from one and shipping it right back to them and they're using us as, as not paying tax on it, which I'm fine with that if it helps the grocery store out. I mean, and we're not on the line for anything.
No, I mean, the way it's, I mean, here, it's a, it's a, this is process is a creature of statute. It's, and you guys are the only ones that, right, like you said, you're the conduit.
Previously, you know, some years ago, these could have been tax-exempt bonds. And so this may have been a source of funding. With federal tax law changes several times, that's really not the case anymore. And so because of those tax law changes, you see a lot more of these buy-your-own-bond issuances now, where this is coming overlaid at the end of the process, kind of over the top, versus a funding source at the beginning of the project where the project could get lower interest rates because it would have been tax-exempt financing. That's, that's not really the case anymore. So these are typically more of the just conduit overlay on the top to help get some of these state law tax benefits.
Other thoughts?
I'd make the motion to approve resolution twenty eighteen dash oh four.
Second.
I have a motion, Sanders, the second, by Brian, to approve resolution twenty eighteen dash oh four. Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed, carries four oh.
Thank you. Thank you.
Appreciate it. We're pouring concrete, so, so far on schedule.
Good to see activity out there. Yes, indeed. A lot of people are talking about it.
I just bring up something new, because I feel that Carolyn is wanting to get out of here. How many of you have been following the lawsuit at Quivera by the state of Kansas? And I have not by the state of Kansas, fish a game against the state of Kansas and what economic impact this is going to be having upon our area. My estimation equally, and I imagine Carolyn is probably going to follow, could be as many as a hundred and twenty irrigation wells shut down, potentially to be a negative implant annually of about ten million dollars in the Big Bend area.
I think that's potentially conservative.
Yeah, potentially conservative. I was thinking that perhaps John and others could form an amicus brief, amicus curi, friend of the court, and join with groundwater management district, et cetera, to perhaps show our public displeasure or public goals. Because if we take ten million out of this area annually, that will affect schools, county government, it will bring irrigated property down to the adware tax on the dry land rate, which will be half, not counting...
But is it actually a lawsuit? It's not, it's, it's within the Division of Water Resources.
Well, no, Fish and Wildlife filed a lawsuit to perfect their water right.
Okay, well, we're talking two separate things. Perfecting the water right is different than the...
Well, they didn't perfect their water right, but they want it enforced where their water is senior to almost everyone in this drainage basin.
But since the state of Kansas already determined that those water rights were perfected, now we're in a stage of what, what is going to be required of our irrigators to make whole essentially...
It's not just irrigators, it's all water users, city included.
Okay. My point is, I'm not sure there's a lawsuit there for us to be law, wait on, unless we wanted to sue the state of Kansas to say, "You didn't perfect water rights correctly." Which, we want to take that on, I mean, it's probably dangerous to have.
I don't think we want to take that on. I think somehow we want to at least make a statement that this is drastically going to affect our schools, our county government, our grocery store.
Totally agree.
And young families within the community.
Department of Interior, frankly, you know, why the Fish and Wildlife services.
But it's going to affect almost everybody sitting at this table and in this room and our schools.
It's a concern.
I just bring that up because Carolyn is here, I was going to bring it up later, but I see her holding for the door.
Well, I just didn't think there was anything else here that needed to be a part of tonight, but I'm glad that, I think it, I agree, it's a critical issue. I think we're in a game now of, of though, what the Department of Ag is going to determine is the, the correct method of, I don't know, mitigate, is the right word, mitigation?
You're talking about ten years of litigation and stuff like that. I mean, with Colorado, Sioux, Nebraska, I think it was twelve, Sioux, Nebraska, I think it's twelve years before that was resolved.
Jim, are they, are we looking at it affecting the waterways in the city of St. John?
I don't know what, I don't know what the water right numbers are. If they are lower than... If they are lower than the water right at Quivera, probably not, but if they're older, they will be affected. Yeah, water law's basically been first in time, first in right. Colorado pretty much wrote the law on water law, goes back 150 years. Done some more law than I, but, you know, their Colorado water law was pegging mine in municipalities, which is, and it's always been first in time, first in right.
Do you think that groundwater management or water pack needs some particular piece of support that they're not getting now to achieve what they're trying to out of, I mean, maybe that to me is, is where, if, if you see something that is missing in what their negotiations are to try to have a good outcome for the county, and we could, we could...
I think that's where we need to be, is probably to back GMD five, they are the elected group, water pack really has no stroke in the game, other than they are, have decided to buy a lobbyist, from what I've been told, or at least for interviewing a lobbyist. But I think we need to back GMD five, probably contact the president, Darryl Wood, or people there, and see what we can do to back GMD five, because.
Are you confident that what their plan is right now is what we want, I don't know, I mean, is?
Well, there, there was as many parts about it that I didn't like as I liked, so I figured it's a little bit like sausage. Perhaps it's not a bad program. There have been several parties that presented other viable alternatives, that are kind of a blend of what GMD five has done, but I think if we would back GMD five, and maybe work with them, and anything we could do, that'd be my first contact with, with GMD five, and talk to Orrin Farrell or those people and see what we can do, or the board of directors there. Because this, this is going to drastically affect anything we do, this, this community, or in the county, and Stafford County, St. John's an epicenter, we're ground zero.
Yeah, I agree.
I don't know if we need to do it as a resolution, or whatever, or just a consensus of the county, then we work with Echo Divo, because. John, do you have thoughts?
Well, the only thing I've done is read newspaper articles, I, I don't know much more about that, I mean, Darrell's sister was an attorney in our law firm before she died, I could certainly visit with Darrell about it, and just report back to council next meeting, kind of work the processes, but.
I would be fine with that.
Yeah, can we just, go ahead and just put this on old business, and then we'll just discuss it on the next meeting? I mean, it's important, I agree.
I, I'm surprised that other forms of government have not come on board, and there's the school and the county, and I think that's what maybe Echo Divo needs to maybe go to county commissioners, the schools, and really appraise them of what's going on. You know, the 4,000 people in Stafford County really don't mean anything to the state of Kansas, and certainly not the federal government, that it's going to impact everyone of us.
Yeah, I just, I, I think we just need to be clear on what we're, what, because it's, it's, it's not just a political issue at this point, it's also kind of a technical issue, and we have to be clear on what we're, what piece we're pushing on, I guess.
I don't know, I think that's why I would talk to Orrin.
At political level, it's a department interior thing, and I think there's probably also a case to be made for, at the federal level, saying, why is the Fish and Wildlife Service doing this? And maybe we've got a different kind of audience than we would have had four years ago, but, I don't know. That's the political side.
That's the political side.
Sorry, really, pretty much on board, Matt, John? Check into it.
And work with Carolyn.
Yeah, absolutely. Jimmy, have you had a chance to talk with Josh Myers over at the school?
No, I have not talked to Josh. But we should. And Josh, Josh is acutely aware of it, because I talked to Chad, Chad Fisher the other day, and Josh is acutely aware of the issue.
Moving on to Department of Energy Committee reports, Grand Administrator Lisa Cornwell, not here. Police Chief Adam Saylor.
The first thing I got, since I was absent last meeting, to kind of update you guys on where we're at with the process on the enforcement of junk vehicles and stuff, we got a really good start on that, we're actually starting to see quite a bit of compliance with that, with individuals either moving vehicles out or working on them, and getting that process going. So basically, what we're kind of looking at now is, is the first round, we just went and served a letter, let them know that they were out of compliance, what needed to be done, and bringing in compliance. The ordinance basically gives them 30 days to do that, so after 30 days, we'll go revisit those that we've served, if they're still out of compliance, we'll, we'll just go in and write a citation, and then they can appear in city court, and then that's basically where they will get the opportunity and education on some ways the city has come about, ways to possibly help them resolve the problem if they need help, or, or what needs to be done there. I know there's a bunch of them, there's probably some we've missed, so we'll kind of get through this first wave, and revisit those, and then see where we're at, and just keep on going on that, so that's where we're at on that, unless anybody has any questions or comments on that. If not, then I'd like to have a 10-minute executive session, discuss individual employee performance per student, and our elected personnel, to include counsel and mayor.
Okay, we'll do that at the end of...
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you wanted that done for me.
Yeah, we'll do that.
Okay.
At the end. Anything else other than, okay. Fire chief?
The only thing I have, I believe John got through all the policies, and didn't have any problem with them, right?
That was my report to marshal.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, that's fine, so I'll get with Mayor, and have him sign them, and then we should be good, right?
Yeah, I think it was approved, I think.
Yeah, so I'll get with you sometime, and we'll sign them, and we'll be done, and that's all I have.
Awesome, thank you. Dare I ask?
My turn?
City clerk? Jamie Getty?
I'll make it short this week.
That's what they always say.
So, we put out the bid for the sewer pond, here are your sealed bids for that.
Where are they?
The sewer pond bids?
I have a comment about that, maybe before you accept those. Last year, towards the end of the season, it got pretty dry. We, we irrigated more than we should have, it caused the suspended solids and the short circuit of the ponds, made the, the suspension, the time period from the time the water enters into the pond, till it's at the third port where it can be discharged, it's supposed to be 90 days, got short circuited to the point that we were down to about 60 days. The guy that used it last year complained he had some worm problems with these goats. This year, we will not water that way, we're going to leave the suspension time at 90 days, if the grass gets dry, they'll just have to shorten the season. It gets us into trouble with our tests, when we send in our test to the, to the, to the lab in Hutch, so if it gets dry, it might be a short season.
We had it last season.
Steve Frank.
He's had it for...
Yeah, last three, or four, or five years, I don't know, a while.
So what can a bunch of you just read about that? Okay, I've got Steve Frank here, for $428, and then Alan Hildebrand for $689.78. Steve's here in St. John, the other one's in Stafford. Have you seen any problems working with Steve?
No, we don't have any problem with him, I mean, you know, whoever you use. They're, they're bidding to pay us this amount for the... For grass, for the grass around the pond.
I would say if we have any problems with Steve, then $200, $200, I'd rather stick with somebody that we have, have had good luck with, I'd go from there.
I'll, I'll discuss the water deal with him.
I was going to say, I mean, I would be fine with that, as long as you let him know, you know, I mean, it's...
We get a good, a decent will be great, you know, but it, it caused problems on both ends, I mean, it caused a problem on his end, caused a problem on our end too, so, you know, we'll, I'll work it out with him. I'm a little bit of a victim on, not that it makes a whole hell of a difference on this bidding process, it went to an out of town bidder for probably $200, I'd say you take the highest bid.
The one, the one for the local is $428, the one for out of town is $689.
Put it out for a bid, take the highest bid.
I also, I don't know anything about the other person, so I would be...
I'd, I'd motion to take Steve Frank's bid, $428.
Motion on the table?
Second.
A motion and a second on the table. Kristian Sanders takes up Steve Frank's bid for city sewer pond grass, $428. Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Two, two. By golly, the first of the season. I'll vote for Steve Frank.
Okay, so, for some reason, pest control got brought to my attention, and I think we use Advance, I got ahold of Jaren to see, going forward, what it would be to use him. I'm not really sure what sort of pest control has ever even been used, I know Advanced is the termite stuff, so I have his proposal on that, and then he, like, we, he asked about like just general pest, and I don't, I don't think Jeff even...
You're still here?
I think the only thing we treated for is termites, we don't do anything else.
That's all we've ever done before, was termites.
So, I mean, I have a quote for both, I didn't know if that's something we need, he just asked, and I really didn't have an answer for him, so.
We never had him back in shop that time.
Yeah, it got bought on attentions, because the bill for Advance is like $2,000.
I'd like to see a copy of that bill.
Does somebody in your department have a pesticide applicator's license, or get one, or you've been? This time, they're still working on it, we will have, yes. Yeah, all you've got to do is go to the... There's, they've taken the test. And act and take the test, it's open book. Well, the one they took wasn't open book, it's a state, it's not open book anymore, not for us.
Are they paying?
For private applicator's license for commercials, not the private applicator.
It was around that.
But is that like a month or a year, or what?
That's yearly.
Well, we had different contracts, we had one like at the pool, we had one at the power plant, I mean...
And I think when Jaren came and looked at everything, I think we have termite...
We have bait stations.
Around the whole square, am I correct?
I think so.
Because he said they're in like, in the middle of the...
Yeah, they're really bad up here. They're bad over town, yeah, they're really bad right in here, yeah.
Yeah, I'd certainly like to see a comparison, is that someone we're in a contract with,
I think it is up in May.
Correct, yeah.
So, it, it's just something that we're looking at to try to cut down on the expenses, and...
Does he do termite stuff too?
Jaren does.
Let me see the termite bid.
And that's the $1,100, and then it wouldn't be that much a year. There's only those two, whatever that totals together.
Is that not something we could do in-house, we had your applicator's license? I don't, I don't know, Jim, I don't know.
I'd like to see a comparison between, an equal comparison between, you know, what's being serviced by Advance, and what would be serviced by him, and then, and then review it at that time, once the contract's up.
We spray for everything else.
I'd like to see a, right, copy of, right, see, see the, the contract and the, their quote.
And I think, did you just say that we spray for everything else?
Well, I mean, we do all the weed spraying, all the mosquito spraying, and everything else, the only thing we haven't done was termites, but I don't guess we ever thought about it, to tell you the truth. Don't really know whether that fits into, you know, what we do, and I assume it does, or comes, I think there's six or seven different tests altogether, now what they entail, I don't know. But there's one for pesticide, for, for mosquito spraying, and, you know, and then for weed spraying and that stuff, so I, I can look into it.
Well, as Jim brought up, the rabies clinic is going to be this weekend, I asked for two bids, and, oh, his name just... Bruce. Bruce Figer is back doing a vet practice, he's going to come over, the city pays for the rabies shot, and that's when we'll get to tag all of the animals, and then he's going to bring over an extra vaccine for certain things, I think I posted that on Facebook today, he was substantially cheaper, so, there's my reasoning for that, and it's not a conflict of interest, so, I mean...
Well, he doesn't pay taxes in town, and he doesn't buy city utilities, and we are both licensed veterinarians in the state of Kansas.
I'd say with no conflict of interest, I would have went with the, the more local person, just in my opinion, even if they are higher, but that's just kind of odd on...
What are we looking at, price difference, or?
Kind of past that.
Over $100? An hour?
It's three hours. I don't care, as long, I don't care as long as you keep the same standard for all bids.
I'm just updating you guys, I'm not asking for permission, it's already set.
So, if you don't keep the same standard for all bids, why do it? Just get whoever you want.
What else, Jamie?
That's it.
Thanks, Jamie. Jeff?
I have nothing.
What? That's nice, now you got to live up to the standard, John, city attorney.
There you go.
Hey, Jeff? Where we at on the pickup, is, is he coming?
Haven't heard yet, it'd be about eight weeks, I mean, we're in February, so probably anytime, we're probably here, I'm guessing, have not heard yet, no.
Man, I thought he was going to be here tomorrow.
Well, I thought he was here two weeks ago, but it didn't show it up, so anyway, we'll see it when it's here.
Right, now it's your turn.
Nothing more. There you go.
Moving on to old business, well, number two?
We're still in limbo on that deal, Ryan, I haven't had a chance to get together, in the way, you know, we're just leaving it on here if you want to, but it's probably something that's not going to get addressed for a while.
Okay. Square.
I went to the county commission meeting last week, and they finally found their deed, but now I believe I'm still waiting on the county attorney to type everything up and get it to us, because Mita hasn't sent anything, so.
Any other new business? Nope. Executive sessions. Police department, 10 minutes to discuss individual employees' performance percentage to the non-elected personnel matter exception, do I hear a motion?
Could all you want, Adam?
Counsel, attorney, Bill and myself.
To reconvene at 26, 8:26. Motion on the table?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Oppose?
Signatures before we go into executive session? Call meeting back to order. It's council's thoughts.
I'd make a motion to hire Bill Elliott from, for full-time for police department, effective respectively after his notice at $17 an hour.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on the table. Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Kerry's four oh. Who made that?
I did.
And second was Ryan.
Me.
Mark. With no other business?
What you want to talk about, about hiring or advertising for the...
Oh, yeah, we do. I've got notes.
He's, he's taking notes.
I've got notes.
Yeah, I guess I would just advise you to go ahead and continue the, just hiring for process.
Anybody again, sir?
I am. I, with the economic things that are facing this county, I think we should probably learn to live within our budget and not probably argue with other person.
So I'd need a vote if you want to allow...
I think this is critical, people.
How, how has the part-time, you know, when he's been working and we had three, three full-time and one part-time, it, what do you...
It's worked, I mean, it's worked out to, to make it work. I mean, it's not ideal, you know, I took a week off over spring break and, and we still had one with 26 hours overtime. You know, I mean, it's, it, it depends on how, how much you want a chance burnt out and folks leaving because they're having to work a 36-hour shift or something. I mean, the thing about it is if, if we get sick, because we cover 24 hours, one of us can't just take off and, you know, like the office staff. This office can run if somebody's sick or two people are sick. That's where it comes into a, a real headache. You know, I mean, outside of work, if one of us steps off curve wrong and has knee surgery, then we're out. We can't work.
It's hard to cover that 24-hour coverage, is what you're saying.
Maybe, maybe we don't need to be 24 hours. You've got, Ohio Patrol lives in town. You have sheriff's department lives in town.
The Ohio Patrol will not handle calls within the city limits. That's not their, that's, that's not what they do. They, they back us up, but if you were to call the Ohio Patrolman at 2 o'clock in the morning and ask him to handle the call...
He's like, I'll come down.
The sheriff's department's not going to...
I don't think it hurts to keep looking.
I don't, I don't think it's a bad idea to just keep looking. I mean, it's not saying we're going to hire someone, right, you know, the next person that you interview.
And I sure wouldn't pass up the option if you do find a part-timer. I'll just tell you that. I mean, at least bring it back to us if you do find someone that's just willing to do part-time.
I can work with it.
I mean, so is everyone on board to at least let him look to fill the position?
Census is, I think.
Might.
No.
Dem's not, so I'll need a motion if you want to allow Adam to continue to look to fill the position.
Second.
A motion and a second on the table. Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Kerry's three one. Jim? No other business? I entertain a motion to...
Salute.
We've got a salute.
That's the most I've ever checked your name, Jim.
Marshall's second.
Not during a screening.
All opposed? Kerry's four.